Right.
There's a lot of steps.
There were a lot of steps. So, we appreciate you guys walking us through it.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Thank you. All right, next up, item number three, discussion of employment status of building official and building inspector. This is a discussion only issue. From the... In the memo I talk about, the question that we have here is that a couple of years ago, I talked with T M L, and the question that came up, oops. Heath is here? All right, Heath is here.
Hello, sir.
So Heath Engelmann asked to talk to the rest of the council, so he couldn't make it. So, we're back to citizens forum. We'll come back to this thing here. Heath, you're up.
Yeah, and I sincerely apologize for being a little late.
That's no problem.
It was a headwind from Amarillo, so I apologize.
No, thanks for discussing.
Literally a headwind, so. I requested a letter from the council, or from the city, for 327. I own 331 Parkwood and the lot next door, 327. In January of 2016, I bought from the city Lakewood Village, the half of the lot on my 327, to make that into a complete parcel. We entered into an agreement, we closed around January-ish, and we had some verbiage around how everything would be fine. I've got, if anybody wants to see a copy of it, that both lots would be good and improved and buildable lots and those type things. And now I'm attempting to sell 327, and because my, I owe money on the home, 331 Parkwood, pretty nice house, come a long way, you know the story, but they won't let me separate the lot without a letter from the city saying that 331 Parkwood remains in good standings. Specifically, they've asked for, and I didn't bring my glasses, so, a letter from your local zoning and building commission, or by the city, she said, stating that the remaining land or home conforms to their regulations.
Sorry, can you say that again?
A letter from your local zoning, building, or city commission stating that the remaining land conforms to their regulations. And so I'd like to see if I could ask you guys for that. The reason why you wouldn't give it to me, and the reason you would say no, is because I got out and pulled a string on property lines of 327 Lot 6 that I purchased half from you, but I own the other half. And the 331 Parkwood home is 5.7 feet from that, approximately. 5.7 feet with margin of error and string and where else. 5.7 feet from that string line.
You're talking about this corner here? Not the, not the...
Yes, sir. Good point. Yeah, right where your house is. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so here's, okay, so let's, let's cut to the chase. Here's the issue. That lot to the left is Lot 6. Is that 6? So Lot 6 is the original lot as platted in 1974 when the town was created.
Which is actually...
That lot is unchanged.
Which is the full one, right?
The full lot.
Doesn't include...
That lot never changed. It's the original lot that was originally platted in 1970s by the grants. It's the original, original lot. What happened is, when they had half of it, the two guys on each side split the lot on paper. They never replatted it. They just said, "You own this half, I own that half." And it's just like me selling you half interest in my car, but I don't go get a new title. They sold it on paper, but they never replatted. So Lot 6 was never divided. There is no line down the middle. The house that you're in, 331 Parkwood, that house was built too close to the property line. But that ship is safe, so that's called legally nonconforming. So if a house ever burns down again, you can't rebuild the garage. You'll have to move it. But whoever issued that building permit, whenever that was built, way back when?
Yes, sir.
They screwed up. Well, you're not gonna lose because that's not fair, but we can't make you tear down the garage because 20 years ago, it got approved and then, you know, they proved it wrong. So, the house is perfectly fine. It's what we call legally nonconforming. You're good five feet off the line. We have a house over there that's two feet off the line. They're still good too.
Good.
The issue with the lot, nothing's changed. The original, as platted lot, nothing. You have a survey of Lot 6.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's... So our zoning ordinance is clear. I think the minimum width of a lot is 70 feet. That lot is 90 feet wide, right?
True statement, yes, sir.
So... I mean, we don't give letters to lots that get sold. We have lots on the shores that got sold this week. It's a regular lot. We don't... It's the original lot that was created when the town was created.
And so everything you said, I agree with. And normally, you wouldn't have to give a letter to sell a lot, but if you, if the city would be so kind as to give me a letter saying that it's legally nonconforming, and that if ever you can add an argument or...
The house?
Wait, which one are you selling? Are you selling the house?
I'm selling, and let's clarify too. So this is Lot 7, both of these together. This is Lot 6.
And again, there is no line down the middle. Lot 7 is...
True, true. This is 7, there is no line. This is Lot 6. I'm selling this.
Okay, all right.
Only.
If you want, if you want...
And they won't let me take this. I have very little money on the home, but they won't let me split this off because when I finance it, they bound all of this.
Right, that's what you do, yeah. So if you want us to write you a letter...
It's the mortgage.
Yes, sir.
Together, not with the...
Yes, sir. That's right.
No.
That's why I guess the house.
If you want us to write you a letter saying the house is legal, nonconforming, that there's no issue with the house, that's fine. If you want a letter saying the lot is a lot, we're not gonna do that.
No, the lot's fine. There's no problems with the lot. The lot's good.
Yeah.
The setbacks need to meet your, the guy that's building on it, his name's Victor.
Yeah.
He's gonna hear of it.
So one possibility is, you could have replatted and moved that property line to the left and made this thing replatted all up and make that thing then legal. You could do that.
True.
Cost you a couple thousand dollars to do that.
Exactly.
But I, you are the definition of legally nonconforming. You're grandfather. You're grandfather. Unless it burns to the ground, you're grandfather.
I don't think, there's no issue. We, I mean, yeah, we say, we are the zoning commissioner in this case.
Yeah, I can write that letter saying the house is okay. My understanding was you wanted us to write a letter about the lot.
No, sir.
There's nothing right about the lot. The lot is the lot. And I don't think it's fair to make you replat. To make the house good when some council approved your building plans 25 years ago.
Were you the one that built the house?
I was not. Actually, there were seven people to try to remodel the house and get a significant accuracy. I was the eighth, and I was successful, so. It was in pretty bad shape when I went in.
Do you don't mind writing the letters?
I don't mind writing the letter.
Okay.
But only on the house.
Can I use a little language?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, give a letter there. Who you want us to go to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now.
Okay, thank you.
That'll work.
Appreciate the thing about us.
You're gonna give us a lot to sell? Are they gonna build on it?
Yes, sir. His name's Victor, Ronnie knows his last name, but we're in contract and we're supposed to close, but this was holding us up, so this was a lot cheaper than a replat, so.
Are you gonna ask for a piece of paper? No, no, that's, that's fair.
That's fair. We don't want you to waste money.
Confusion on which one of us.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
All right. Okay. Back to where we were. All right, so let's go back to the, back to the employment status of building officials. So, the issue that's come up here is that we use building officials, obviously, from Prosper. These guys are great. And technically speaking, they are independent contractors. They're not employees of the town. So a couple of years ago, I got ahold of T M L, and I said, "Look, here's the deal. How do I make sure that these guys are covered if, if somebody sues them? If somebody were to say, 'You know what? I don't like the building they showed, and, you know, he makes me feel bad, so I'm gonna sue him just because I can.'" Who's gonna cover it? Well, if you sue any of us, or if you sue Linda or any employee, or insurance company pays. None of us pay. Anybody can sue you because you're tall, or anything they want, and we're covered. But what about the building officials? And when I talked to them in the past, like, I know Steve, they carry liability insurance. So if they ran over somebody on the job site, or if they dropped a two-by-four and hit somebody, but they didn't carry legal liability insurance. They carried regular liability. And they have, obviously have medical and all that. So when I talked to T M L, they said, "Well, it's not clear what would happen, but if you made them municipal officers, made them town officials, then that's defensible. It's not perfect, but it's defensible." And so about two years ago, we made Steve, by ordinance, we made him the chief building official, and Brian as the deputy chief building official. They have titles. They're still not, they're still paid the same way. They're paid as they do the inspections. But they are, just like Andy is a municipal officer, both are engineers, they are municipal officers, just like Linda is the city secretary. Now, because of some recent litigation, it's come to the forefront now where we have some people that are throwing around a lot of, you know, "I don't like you, I'm gonna sue you just because I don't like you." So it's come back again. And so my concern was, I talked to T M L and said, "Let's pin this down for real." I wanna know if, if a homeowner says, "I'm building, I don't care, I'm building a couple million dollar house, I'm gonna sue the building official, try and intimidate him, 'cause I'm gonna sue him, 'cause I'm not gonna rip out all this wiring that's illegal. I'm gonna sue him personally and make him come to court, make him waste his money. Because if it's that, or I've gotta tear out $50,000 worth of wire, I'll sue him." I'll try and intimidate the building official because the city can't pay for that. We can't pay for his, his legal bills because he's not an employee. And that's a crappy position to be in, and I don't want them in that position where they can be threatened and they can be intimidated because it's not fair. So, I've talked to T M L again. I've talked to the building officials. Ed and I had lunch with Brian and Steve and Kevin to get their opinion, to say, "Look, have you guys thought about your exposure? Because it's not fair that you're gonna enforce our ordinances, our life health safety stuff, and if somebody wants to sue you, we leave you out on a limb." That's not right. We have an obligation to make sure that you're covered like we are." That's, that was my thinking. And so, the way that we could do this is that we would make them officially part-time employees. Call on T M L, you can pay them the same way, pay them as you do with the inspections. You just, you make them employees, and what you would do is you withhold the social security. So you would have to pay the 7.65%. Right now, they're self-employed, so they pay both halves. We would pay the employer's share of the social security, and that makes them an employer. And then we would give them a W-2 and no benefits. As far as they're concerned, it's the same exact job they're doing. Nothing changes. The only difference is when we pay them each month, is that we withhold social security from them. That's the only difference. But they would be 100% covered under all of our liability insurance and, you know, as far as the legal liability. So, that was my, that was my genesis in trying to think this through because we do have legal actions going on right now in the city where people are suing just because they can. And it's just, it's not right, and I don't want them to have that. I told the folks in anybody's questions.
Financial obligation is essentially just the... It's already, it's just an additional basic 7% amount which can be absorbed in, out of our cut at any rate.
Yes.
It's not like we're gonna be in a lawsuit.
So, most, I mean, we, we could, essentially, we could, it cuts into some of, some of our overhead.
There's no reason to change the building rate.
No, I don't see any reason to change the...
Right, right.
Right, right.
Right.
But it will be a cost to it, huh?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how much it'll be?
Yeah, it's about, it's about, I think I put it in the numbers back there, about 1,800. Based on last year's thing now. Yeah, the other thing is, what would be, an incidental benefit is our auditors have suggested that we go and start acquiring the payroll software, software package. Do an automated payroll. That it would be a lot easier, and this would quickly facilitate that. Because Linda handles all the payrolls, so Iris filed, it's now automated. So you can buy a module equipped with, which will, which will not only automate the reporting, but actually makes the payments. So, he's recommended we kind of, next time we upgrade, we put this module...
We already do that anyway, isn't it, for, for the whole thing?
We do. It's just, it's a, it's something as we grew, you know, it's nice to have the automation doing that. The 941 report is a pain in the butt to do the tax report. It just covers. But yeah, that, that is the financial impact. Yeah, yes, sir.
How come, they're independent contractors, right? How come they can't purchase the liability insurance that they need? Why, why aren't we paying for it?
Uh, well, it's, from an economic standpoint, it, it's, it's a wash. In other words, if, if they were to go out and say, "In order for me to work for Lakewood Village, I've gotta spend $5,000 on liability insurance," then they're not gonna work for $40 an inspection. They're gonna now need $60 an inspection to, to make it, you know, I mean... They're not gonna eat that. They're gonna try to pass that then on to us, or they're not gonna work for us. So, so it's a...
The part is the T M L insurance is already, we already have that.
Yeah, for us, the incremental cost is virtually zero.
Yeah, but we don't have money to fix the roads, but then you're gonna put the people on the road.
Yeah, we just, we just spent $25,000 fixing the road.
I know, but I'm saying, there's still road repairs that we've done, right?
That's right.
We don't have the money to do that, so why are we hiring people when we don't have money to fix things in the town?
Well, I, I absolutely agree with you saying that. The town's financially over stretched. Yes, we are. I think he's coming with a compassion argument saying, "The guys are looking for us, and is there something we can do to help protect them?" I, I would too have a problem getting people to payroll is the last thing I, I would want to do. Besides the liabilities, the costs, and the else, you're creating a situation where you have part-time employees, part-time employees become full-time employees, and we know where that goes. But I guess the question is, is there a way to divide and production? You know, is there a, I mean, could we look at an insurance policy for them? What would it be to, to cover them? I mean, maybe we could instead of bringing them on as employees, maybe we could give them the coverage and pay that bill and say, "Hey, you know, we think the right thing to do is to cover them with insurance in case they get sued for X number of dollars. Take out a policy and pay it off."
Well, I would hazard a guess, I mean, that's a good suggestion. I think that'd be something good to follow up on. And you can probably take that action out of since it's your suggestion. But my bet is that for the three of them to go out and purchase this type of an insurance and compare that cost to the massive policy that I would predict T M L has, there's a significant difference. And if that would be the case, then it likely would increase their rates that they would charge to work for us. And I think there's one other consideration here in, in looking at this from a positive perspective. And that is, to a large extent, forget the money issue, but it's really not, it's really not only protecting them, it's protecting all of us. Because if they got sued and started reducing their, their standards and allows some, you know, inscrupulous things to happen in the construction of a home, I mean, you know, you can take that just about anywhere you want. That's just my initial thought on this.
I mean, I, I think you're right, econo, there are alternatives. Certainly, you're absolutely right. There is, you could get third-party insurance. I don't know what that cost is. Based on our T M L insurance, it's a, you know, to insure us for $5 million a year in case we kill somebody versus $1 million a year, it's like $11. Because it's spread out of the whole state of Texas, and we are tiny. So, our insurance cost is microscopic relative to what a third party would be. I'll look it up. No, I'll find out. That's a good point. I didn't think to look up, but there is no free lunch. It's just like, you know, these issues where you have the minimum wage of $20, but you don't wanna pay $5 for hamburger. Well, you can't get there from here. So if, if, if there's a situation where, you know, they're gonna incur a cost to work in Lakewood Village, if they say, "Look, in order for me to pay this insurance, if that's what it takes to work in Lakewood Village, then either I'm not gonna work there, or you're gonna have to raise my pay."
Or they were, they were fine working there until you brought it up to them.
The problem is, we have losses right now because people are trying to intimidate us.
The playing field's changing.
The playing field just changed. What's the, what's the change?
What, what, I mean, from a building inspector's point of view, they didn't come to us, they made, we did construction, we gained them, so, I mean, if we, if we, I mean...
But it doesn't mean that they couldn't come back to us to muffle with the issue. I mean, we just happened to get into the play first.
I mean, it's an issue that came up two years ago. The issue came up two years ago. I think it was about two years ago. And, and the T M L recommendation was to make them municipal officers. That was the initial reaction, saying, "Let's look into it, but in the short run, if you do that, then maybe we'll cover it. Maybe, you know, we'll see." And, and that was fine. That's what we did then. Now, right now, we have issues where we have some people in town. It costs $41 to file a lawsuit in the other county. $41, that's all it costs. So, you know, if I go and file a lawsuit and say, "This building inspector caused me emotional distress because he failed me when I thought my house was good, so I'm gonna sue him for a million dollars, and I've gotta tell you for..." That's what we have going on now, where you can, you can sue for frivolous reasons. You don't, you're not gonna win. It's not about winning. It's, it's just about, basically, using it as a threat, using it as intimidation. And, look, our building officials don't have the money to hire attorneys. They can't do it. This is a second job for them. So it, it's, it's turning into a problem for us. And, and it's unfortunate. To me, it's, it's not good. It's just, it's not a good thing that happened.
I understand the compassion. I think the problem is our comments broke.
We're not broke. Don't say it.
But you're so broke. Yeah, eight and a half million dollars.
That's an inflammatory thing to say. It was not broke. Don't say that.
It is not inflammatory.
It is.
We rolled out eight and a half million dollars in projects. We have $4,000 left in the budget.
We have, we have, so it's a million dollars. Okay, let's move on. All right, is there any other, is there any other questions?
It's not, it's not on the agenda.
All right, let's, let's stop worrying about your comments. All right, let's, let's move on.
Do I treat you like that?
Let's go on. All right, next. Is there any more comments on that? Any more comments on the...
I, I like your idea. I think it's worth actually...
Mark, just a question about it. How do other towns or cities handle their inspections? Are they hired by the town or city?
You have two choices when it comes to inspections, pretty much. You either have employees, which is what most cities will do, or you hire a third party. You hire an outside company. Like Oak Point does not have building inspectors. They use a third party. They use Bureau Veritas, I believe. You hire a third party to do it, and you pay them to do your inspection. So they assume all this. We did that in the past. We did that. We tried that out, and it failed spectacularly. You know why? Because the building inspectors wouldn't, wouldn't inspect to our codes. They refused to do our codes. They said, "Your codes are too strict. We don't like that. You know, that's good enough." And it really made me angry because they wouldn't inspect to our codes. They used their own codes. And they were cheaper than ours. So driveways and plumbing, they wouldn't do our codes. You know, we required copper plumbing. They said, "Uh, we think that's nuts. That's too conservative. We, we believe you ought to be able to use PVC." And they would approve stuff that was dead set against our codes, and we fired them. They did one house, and we fired it. Fired them right in the middle of the job. So, the problem is, when we hire a third party, is that Lakewood Village codes are very strict. And we have no assurance that they, we know for a fact they didn't follow our codes. So I had to hire a building inspector to go behind the building inspectors to check that they're doing, it's nuts. So we've been there. It didn't work for us. We just don't get any respect from the third party because we're a small town. They don't respect our codes. And it's unfortunate, but there's nothing we can do about that. So we failed at that.
Maybe it's not relatively half times the cost to the city.
Like an umbrella policy, like that covers above and beyond? Can't you have an umbrella policy?
For the city?
Sure.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, then why don't they, why don't they cover by that?
They're not employees.
They have to be employees.
They have to be an employee. You'd have to write a vending money insurance, just like we do for the other ones. You know, they have, that's a little my suggestion, is just put a vending money there and get it covered.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, yeah, they would be totally covered if they're an employee. And we'd have to give them benefits. T M L said, "Well, all you gotta do is if you withhold their social security, then you're considered an employee."
What did you want to do again?
So, there's definitely options. You, you wouldn't have vending money. He's just, he's referring to the, the T M L as a specific insurance policy that covers us. So if you went to a different company, they may have different options, but he's referring to what T M L currently has. And according to the T M L, which the insurance reviews, they would need to be employees in order to be covered.
So, are these people, they're, they only inspect our town? They don't go to other towns?
No, no, they work for Prosper. They're full-time. Their head building officials at Prosper, they're the, the head people in Prosper. They come here after hours. They come here at 5:00.
So, they're, they don't have insurance in Prosper?
They do. At health insurance. At health insurance. They have unemployment insurance.
Prosper is a...
Prosper's your employee.
Prosper allows them to come over here and inspect. If Prosper said they're not, if Prosper didn't allow it, they wouldn't even be allowed to come over here. They're not, what Prosper's not gonna do is pay their insurance to be over here in a different city. Their citizens in Prosper are paying their taxes to pay their insurance, hook care to pay for their insurance over here in a different town.
I mean, our, our fundamental problem is, this week, we had three inspections. We, we can't have a full-time building inspector making $80,000 a year that has three inspections. We're, we're a tweener. We, we just, we just don't have enough volume to have a full-time building official. We don't have the number of inspections. So, we've always, for as long as I've been here, for the last 15 years, we've always used Prosper. And the town of Prosper has an agreement with all their inspectors. They have a signed agreement. They agree that they can work here. It's not under the table. It's explicit. Prosper agrees that they will allow their building officials to work for the town of Lakewood Village. That's the agreement that we have. As long as it's after 4:00. As long as they do not use Prosper trucks. That's why there's no pro, you don't see any trucks. You see Prosper on them. They use their own personal vehicles. And we've had that agreement for, as long as I can remember, for 15 years. That's always been the agreement. If that's what they do. But Prosper has the, like, their medical insurance is too Prosper. So I'm not worried about them falling off a ledge or something. They're covered. We don't pay their medical. We don't pay their, the only thing we're trying to combat for is a lawsuit. Somebody trying to sue them.
So the option is T M L, let's look at a second option of just a third party and compare the proposed $2,000 a year to whatever a third party would be.
Okay.
Would, would we be able to narrow, narrow it down to one inspector instead of two or three?
So, what happens is inspectors take vacation, like all of us do take vacation. If you were building a house and you said, "You know what? You're shut down for three weeks because he's fishing in Alaska." We'd have to have more than one inspector. Also, inspectors have different credentials, so our chief building inspector actually can't be our fire code enforcement because he doesn't have the credentials, so our, our fire code is actually through Brian because he has the credentials inspected.
And frequently, they have after-hour commit, family-type commitments like all of us do as well, so three gives us a lot more flexibility in terms of scheduling a lot of times.
And most of the time, it's only two. Kevin is actually, the only if Steve and Brian can make it.
I might get six sometimes too. When I was having my inspections done, Steve was sick, and Brian had to face everyone.
That's sad, too. I have...
Two months or so.
Just a, just a little while ago, Steve was on vacation, and so he couldn't inspect my house, so Brian did.
And, and the other thing is, what we're trying to do is, you know, as you know from the neighbor's side, there's a lot of possible development that's all around us. And we don't wanna be in a situation where we have one inspector, and suddenly, we need six. So Steve has been trying to rotate Kevin in and giving Kevin, you know, various inspections to keep kind of Kevin, get him indoctrinated, and so Steve is really looking out there to the future time when, you know, if we have 10 houses going at once.
And Steve also wants to retire, so he's doing the town a huge favor by being a mentor to Kevin and getting him up, getting him up speed on code.
He is. He's, he's really, so, it's, you know. Okay, so I will, I'll bring this back in the future, but everybody understands the issue, right?
Thank you for bringing it forward, because I mean, that's, that's huge for those guys that...
Next up, we have discussion of utility and building services coordinator position. So this is something that Ed's been working on for several months. And spent a lot of time meeting with Summer, trying to kind of work out the, kind of what the position was. Do you wanna describe kind of what your introduction was?
I was asked to investigate, I guess, and analyze Summer's position, and the ultimate goal was to really look at those, all the things that she does and see where it drove us to in terms of consideration for salary increase.
And as well as defining a, a job description, which doesn't exist today. And so, uh, this little presentation, uh, is for information only tonight. I don't think we're planning to take any action at all on it. I'm gonna step through this and ask the board, uh, the council members to, uh, you know, take it home and think about it because we do have some hard decisions to make that I'll get to as we get, uh, near the end. So I wanna quickly move through this and I think you'll get the gist of it. On page two is, uh, the contents. And you can see that it includes, uh, quite a number of steps, but basically, the, uh, the, uh, the job or the task involved three steps. First of all, trying to identify what she does, what those tasks were. And then, uh, trying to group those tasks and to measure them against a set of five variables, which I'll talk about in, in a little bit. So, um, on the next page, page three, you'll find the tasks that we identified. There are about twenty-seven of them. And they're in no specific order in, in, in this present, in this, uh, portrayal here.
Let me jump in real, real quick here. So what, what Ed's trying to do here is, we could go look at another city and say, you know, what's the job description for a utility clerk? And how much do they get paid? We don't, that's not what we have. That's not what she does. So we don't, we don't need to know what a generic position is. We need to identify what we use the position for and what is the position that we're doing? What actually is getting done? So identify that and then try and map that into what's that translate to. So a lot of what Ed's initial thing is, what exactly is the task at hand and identify that task at hand? So it, it's not just, hey, we need a clerk level three. What does that pay for clerk level?
And I think one other thing to help set it up too, this is, by going through this, this'll help identify is that right now she's part-time. Help us manage how many hours we, we need a person here for and carefully manage when we need to take over to a full-time person. So I mean, it's, very common, it's, it's.
Yeah, and unfortunately, uh, because of the number of tasks that we ask her to do and the variations in the tasks, you know, the only way that you can actually compare a job to a job basically is if they do the same thing. And this was very difficult to do, we'll, we'll see in just a little bit. So it was very difficult to come up with a job title so that you could go out and do that comparison that Mark's talking about. We took a shot at it. I'll share that with you. So on page four, I took those twenty-seven tasks that she does and tried to make some sense of them in terms of grouping them. And in my mind, there are different ways, uh, perhaps others could cut the, cut the pie. I came up with three basic groups, the first of which being the data entry and maintenance.